Good evening. I now call to order the Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, 6:00 PM School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you, and we will now present the colors. Tonight, we have Matanzas Army JROTC, led by Cadet Sergeant, First Class Dominic Guerrero Campos, Jesus Fernandez Galvez, Andre Pelepenko, J.C. Kasha, and Advisor First Sergeant Troy Caraballo. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have the National Anthem, and we're honored to have Ms. Natalia Bermudez, an eighth grader from Indian Trails Middle School.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars throw the perilous fight? And the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
You may now retire the colors. All right, you may be seated. Thank you, Ms. Bermudez, for that lovely voice of yours tonight. We really appreciate it. You did a great job. So we will now move on with roll call, and we'll start down at the end of the dais.
FBC here.
Johani Strong, Matanzas High School Student School Board Representative here.
Lauren Ramirez, District Five, present.
Janie Ready, District Three, present.
Derek Vars, District One, present.
Kristy Chong, present.
Wolf Furry, present.
Leshak Moore.
Okay, so this moves us on to the special announcements portion of our meeting tonight, and we're going to go to 2.02. That's Teacher and Employee Appreciation Week, and I'd like to invite Dr. O'Brien up for this presentation.
All right, this is a resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing May 5th through 9th as Teacher and Employee Appreciation Week. Whereas teachers shape the future by guiding and educating the next generation, and whereas educators work with students from diverse backgrounds and experiences, and whereas the future of our nation relies on ensuring every student receives a high-quality education, and whereas our dedicated educators devote countless hours to preparing lessons, assessing student progress, mentoring, coaching, and engaging in service to their communities, and whereas the vital work of educating our children is made possible through the efforts of all employees within Flagler Schools, and whereas these committed professionals ensure students are transported safely, learn in clean and secure environments, are well-nourished, supported, and cared for throughout the school year, and whereas the Flagler County community values and supports its educators and school employees for the essential roles they play in shaping the minds and lives of our youth, now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that the week of May 5th through 9th, 2025, is recognized as Teacher and Employee Appreciation Week in Flagler Schools, and be it further resolved that the School Board of Flagler County strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers and employees for their dedication and devotion to their work, adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the 22nd day of April, 2025.
Thank you, Dr. O'Brien. Okay, so now we move on to 2.03, Water Safety Month, and we have presenter Ms. Carrie Purdy. I'd like to invite you up, and Matanzas High School Swim Coach Rebecca Smith. Oh, for FBC, so, sorry, pardon me. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Do you have it on the screen there in front of you? Okay.
A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing May as Water Safety Month in Flagler County. Whereas swimming and aquatic-related activities contribute to good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all Floridians and visitors, and whereas education and water safety helps prevent drowning and water-related injuries, and whereas with 18 miles of beach within Flagler County plus hundreds of private pools, lakes, canals, and hotel pools, the danger of drowning is everywhere, and whereas it is important for everyone, including children, parents, and caregivers, be aware of water safety rules and programs in order to prevent drownings and recreational water-related injuries. And whereas Flagler Schools is proud to be a part of the annual water-safe event held in participation with many community organizations to promote safe practices when, in, or around the water, now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County Schools Board that Flagler Schools joins the nation in recognizing May 2025 as National Water Safety Month as a symbol of our commitment to creating a safe environment for recreation and physical activity across our community. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the 22nd day of April, 2025.
Thank you very much. Would you like to come up front here so we can get a picture with you? Okay, so next up is 2.04, Asian American and Pacific Islander Month, presented by Lisa Davina.
A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month seeks to honor and recognize the contributions of residents from Asia, India, and the Pacific Islands, and whereas Congress in 1979 designated the week of May 4th as an annual celebration in observance of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Week. The week-long celebration was extended to the entire month in 1990 by an act of Congress. The observance is traditionally celebrated in May to mark the arrival of the first Japanese immigrants in the United States on May 7, 1843. Whereas since 2010, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have seen significant population growth. The latest estimates from the U.S. Census show more than 3,000 people, or 2.5% of Flagler County's population, identify as Asian, Native Hawaiian, or Pacific Islander. And whereas we acknowledge Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have lived in Flagler County for many years, contributing to our local economy, culture, education, politics, arts, literature, science, and technological developments. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month allows us to appreciate and celebrate the importance of inclusion and building a brighter future for all residents by recognizing the contributions and accomplishments of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. Now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that Flagler Schools recognizes May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and encourages all residents to participate in activities in promotion of Asian American and Pacific Islander heritage. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, the regular open public meeting thereof held on the 22nd day of April, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davina. Okay, so that moves us to 2.05, Mental Health Awareness Month, and that will be presented by Ms. Brandy Williams.
Good evening, Board, Cherry Furry and Superintendent Moore. So I'm standing here before you this evening on behalf of all families that we support for mental health, both on Flagler School campuses and in our community. So, thank you. A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month, whereas good mental health is essential to overall health, productivity, and quality of life, and whereas mental illness affects individuals of every age, background, and community, impacting millions of families each year, and whereas with appropriate treatment, support, and understanding, people living with mental health conditions can lead full and meaningful lives, and whereas stigma and misconceptions surrounding mental illness continue to discourage many from seeking care, and whereas open dialogue and personal connection are powerful tools in reducing stigma and promoting compassion, and whereas greater public awareness and community support are key to building a healthier, more inclusive society. Now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board, we do hereby recognize May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month and encourage everyone in our community to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the 22nd day of April, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, so that closes out our special announcements for this evening, and we now move on to our Spotlight section. And first up is Superintendent Strategic Spotlight.
We have a special spotlight for you tonight. We have with us a portion of Blue Steel from Matanzas High School. I want to introduce you to Dr. Jared Allen, the instructor for this band.
Good evening. As Ms. Moore has mentioned, I am Dr. Jared Allen. I have the privilege of teaching Matanzas Blue Steel over at Matanzas High School. Matanzas Blue Steel is the largest school of steel band in the state of Florida, and we are in the top five in the country. So I was actually told by our clinician that we had in last week, and he travels all over the country, works with all kinds of programs, that as far as numbers and enrollment, we are the biggest. So kind of an exciting privilege to be able to work with them. We annually travel up to the Virginia International Pan Fest and have earned superior and excellent ratings up there on the national ratings up there on a national level. Yeah, we get to represent the community, both within and outside the school, and really take advantage of that opportunity. So, we're excited to be here and to play for you tonight.
Thank you. Look forward to it. Well, well done. I felt like we took a trip to the Caribbean.
I know. I heard someone say encore, encore, but we appreciate Blue Steel, and thank you for being here tonight and highlighting just one of the many great opportunities that are offered to our students here in Flagler County. I know you guys have some, you just came off of a nice trip, and I'm sure you have some coming up. It's always opportunities to support our bands, our arts program. So if you're looking for ways to support, these are great opportunities to support students who are doing great things in the community. So, thank you.
Yes, outstanding job. Thank you for being here. We have some great talent in this school. Okay, so that moves us on to 3.02, and that would be the Flagler County Ed Foundation Spotlight, and we have Ms. Teresa Rizzo. Welcome, Ms. Rizzo.
Thank you. Absolutely. So, good evening Chair, Superintendent, School Board, and Flagler Family. I'm honored to be here tonight on behalf of the Flagler County Education Foundation to share a glimpse into the exciting and joyful season that we are all in here in Flagler Schools, one that's filled with celebration and collaboration, but most of all, lots of celebration of student success. As we approach the end of the school year, we're thrilled to celebrate our 2025 Take Stock in Children high school graduates. These remarkable students who have worked tirelessly alongside their mentors will be honored next Tuesday night at our Take Stock in Children Night of Celebration. It's a special evening where dreams take center stage, and we get to celebrate not just graduation, but students who were expected to never graduate from high school. So it is a promise of a brighter future for them, and we are so excited to celebrate our 16 graduates and their mentors. In addition to that, we're proud to announce a powerful collaboration with our Flagler Schools ESC Department. Through the support of the Able Trust Fund, they are increasing their investment in our transitional programs that prepare our students with disabilities to life beyond high school. These programs are more than just pathways, but they're bridges to independence, purpose, and inclusion. And I just want to take a minute to celebrate Ebru Snodgrass. You see her there getting her award, but what she does for these programs, but specifically for our Stuff Bus program and her students is just absolutely incredible. The award has a really long name, but we celebrated her in our board meeting, and we're just so blessed to have her as part of our team. There's also more to celebrate. Next Wednesday, it's a busy couple months. I know you guys know that. Next Wednesday night, April 30th at 5:00 p.m., the Palm Coast Songwriters Festival is hosting a special event at the beautifully renovated Daytona State Amphitheater. This is a night of music that will benefit scholarships for Flagler students planning to attend Daytona State College. It's a perfect example of how our community rallies together to turn melodies into meaningful support. And finally, I want to share one of the most electric moments that we've had this year is last Thursday night at our JDC book launch and signing at Buddy Taylor Middle School. Over 200 student authors and a couple illustrators, yes, they are published authors, shared their stories, their voices, and their hearts. The energy and the cafeteria was just simply unforgettable, and it would not have been possible without the incredible support of our teachers' families in this community, especially FC3 and the city of Palm Coast, who has given us a grant to support this program throughout the next year. So we're so grateful for that. Deeply grateful for our Board of Directors, our many partners, and each of you for believing what is possible for Flagler students. The work of the foundation is only possible through these collaborations, and together we're shaping lives. So thank you for your continued support and for helping make dreams come true here in Flagler Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. Okay, so we will now move on to 3.03, and now I'd like to invite Ms. Katie Lenhart, our Supervisor of Elections, up to share the winner of the Voter Guide Cover Design Contest.
Good evening Chair, School Board members, Superintendent, and our student School Board members. I'm glad to be here tonight to recognize our student winner of the Voters Guide Design Contest that you guys chose at your workshop recently. This is Lily Whaley, and she was second place winner of the design contest. Remember, there was a tie, so you couldn't decide, and there was two designs that both got three votes. It was a quick recount, only six votes, a lot better than recounting 50,000 votes, I'll tell you. And then there was a runoff, and you chose the design. But Lily is here to accept her certificate. I'm really excited about this because she brought the whole fam, as you can see.
Wonderful.
And she's a Metansus High School student, and we haven't had a Metansus High School student winner in a while. And I didn't know if you guys know, but there's a bit of a rivalry going on, and, right. So FPC has been dominating this contest for a long time, so I'm really glad to see a Metansus student here tonight. This is the Voters Guide Design Contest 15th year, so yes, I've been doing this 15 years. Wow. And it's really great to involve the students in a real-world design project in their digital design classes. So I'd just like to call out really quickly and say thank you to our two digital designs teachers, Taylor Pogue and also Amanda Johnston, who made this part of the curriculum in the classroom to give these students an opportunity to participate. So I'd just like to present her with the certificate, and I gave you all a copy of the Voters Guide. This is kind of slimmed-down version. It's in production now. It'll be a lot larger, on bigger paper, but you can't produce that in the office. So you got kind of a hot-off-the-press, quick one for tonight. So, I'll just read this quickly into record. This is a second-place certificate of achievement presented to Lily Whaley of Metansus High School for an award-winning design and second-place winner of the 2025 Voters Guide Design Contest for Flagler County High School students, proudly presented by myself, Katie Lenhart, on April 22nd, 2025. And she also gets a $50 Target gift card.
Wow.
Yeah. So if you don't mind, if we can get a picture with the family.
Yes, we'd love to do that. Congratulations.
Excellent. Right up here. One, two, three, big smiles. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you, Katie. Okay. So now we will move on to approval of minutes. So I'd like, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes 4.01 through 4.04.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bars and a second by Ms. Ramirez. If there isn't any discussion, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We will approve the minutes. So now for the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda for this evening?
No change, but at the request of the Board for the updates from the workshop to the board meeting, the inter-local agreement with the School Board of Volusia County was in consent. It should have been in action, so we did make that adjustment. You see it before you in action. Outside of that, there have not been any changes.
So I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda as stated.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Bars.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Ramirez.
Can I make an additional request before the final? I was just wondering if, Ms. Moore, it would be appropriate to introduce Mr. Bossardette's qualifications, something you did at our information workshop, but maybe might be appropriate to reiterate when we go over the personnel items.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. We will move forward with this agenda. So that leads us to our first public comment section, and this is for agenda items only. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No one signed up for public comment.
Okay. Then we will close public comment, and... So we also have a second public comment for 6.02, for instructional materials, personal finance, intensive reading. Is there anybody signed up for comment on that?
No, sir. No one signed up for it.
All right, so we will close all public comment for this evening until later in the meeting where we open it up to all topics. So that moves us to finance consent. Now, just for the benefit of the public, the consent items, unless a board member decides to pull an item, we move through these quite quickly, because we've already workshopped these items and discussed them previously to tonight. So all of the information that we needed to make these votes has already been received and discussed. So I'm going to move to finance consent, 7.01 through 7.06. I'd entertain a motion to approve these items.
Move approval.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Chong.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bars. Any discussion?
I would love if Ms. Moore or a staff member could comment on the final budget regarding the Metansus build. There were a lot of items in here that were large dollar items that were part of that construction, and that was also presented in a workshop, but thought it might be appropriate to reiterate today the success of some of the dollars that were used through some of the strategies from the Plant Services folks and Mr. Bush.
Welcome, Ms. Womack.
I would have to revert to Mr. Bush on that. He's the one that oversees that entire budget, and I do not see him in attendance today. So whatever your purview is, I'll be happy to have him get something out to you, or it could be addressed at the next information meeting or workshop.
Oh, no, he already presented it. I just thought that since we're voting on this item, which had a lot of the construction materials, Ms. Moore, do you have enough context that you're definitely very familiar on top of the cost-saving initiatives that you guys undertook in that project?
Yeah, so one of the major things that our team did was purchase the supplies ourself through direct pay, and that allowed for us to save over $100,000. I want to say it was about $176,000 that we were able to save by taking those additional steps. Though that does become taxing sometime on the staff, it was definitely appropriate for us to do that in order to have that fiscal savings. And we were able to meet budget for this project within all of our contingencies and all of that. So we are excited for this project to be finished. We will have the official rip and cut in for it on May 13th.
Thank you for entertaining that request. I just thought with these dollar amounts that, under the vendor payments, it would be great to highlight that win.
Yes, definitely a win. So I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. So that moves us on to academic service consent, 9.01 through 9.04. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bars, second by Ms. Ruddy. If there's any discussion, then we will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. Okay, so that moves us down to Human Resources Services. That's 11.01. Like a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Chong.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Ramirez. There's no discussion. All in favor?
That was the one that... That's the item that I was hoping Ms. Moore could highlight, the experience from Mr. Bossardette in filling the safety position role left over by Willahan.
Yes, we are excited to welcome Mr. David Bossardette back to the district office. He's served in various roles throughout the organization. He's been a teacher, district behavior specialist, district coordinator of risk management, as well as our district safety specialist and an assistant principal. He navigated us through COVID as the district safety specialist and risk management specialist at the time, and we are excited to have him back. He has a great relationship with our Sheriff's Office, as well as with Nefec through risk management, and our schools and our different sites. So we are excited that he is going to be joining us back here at the district office in that role. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. And also, just to clarify, this is not a new position. This is a position that has been vacated by its previous holder, Mr. Willahan. And this is just finalizing his permanent move to that role.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so on 11.01, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. Okay, so this brings us to our first action item, and that is 14.01. This is the Permission to Advertise Policy 716, Authorized Travel Expenses.
Good evening.
Yes.
Good evening, Chairman, Furry Board members, and Superintendent Moore. Mr. Smith and I are here to seek permission to advertise Policy 716 regarding travel. We did workshop this two weeks ago, as well as this afternoon at 1:00 to make some changes that were recommended by the Board. At this time, Mr. Smith and myself will take any questions that you may have.
Okay, not seeing any questions. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Ruddy, a motion by Ms. Ruddy and a second by Ms. Ramirez.
Just a comment for that. I just appreciate Mr. Smith working with us to make those changes that will be beneficial to all of our employees in updating basically an outdated statute that we have that will benefit Flagler personnel. So thank you very much for that. that we have that will benefit Flagler personnel. So thank you very much for that.
I also think, Mr. Bars, thank you for the recommendation to include the, to make sure we're aligned with those per diem days according to the government site and standardization. So that was really great. Thank you.
Okay, so on 14.01, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will take us now to technology and innovation, 15.01, adoption of revisions of the school board policy 321, 329. And we have Mr. Deesing here this evening.
And just as a reminder, this is a follow-up as part of our process for moving to the Neola policy review. So this is in alignment with what you'll ultimately be adopting as part of that overall package in July. So these are two policies that we need to get things rolling for our actually technology collections and distributions. Do you have any questions?
Just a comment. Thank you for working on this. Technology is very important in Flagler. We're very, you know, high-tech and great job. Thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion on 15.01.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Ruddy. If there isn't any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. So that takes us to 15.02, memorandum of agreement and data sharing agreement for collaboration with the University of Florida Board of Trustees. And yes, Mr. Deesing.
So we have the wonderful opportunity of bringing this to the board. We did get a chance to talk about this extensively at our board workshop. This is an opportunity that's been offered to us through some of the great work that our teaching and learning and our technology specialists have been able to do, highlighting some of the work that our middle school and secondary math teachers have been able to accomplish. So this is really tying up the loose ends that we had with our agreement with the Lassner Center, University of Florida, in collaboration with the Khan Mego application that's part of the Khan Academy. Do you guys have anything to add? This has been a really great project, so I really wanted to pass it off to these two for the work and pulling these together and getting this document to you guys in a very quick short order. Any questions?
No, I'm just very excited for us to be involved in that project with the University of Florida. And the information we'll learn about better use of AI in the classroom, as well as the researchers at U of F in order to learn what's actually effective in instructing our K-12 students is going to be amazing and is a testament of our excellence, right, in K-12 education, our county serving at the top of that. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion on 15.02.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bars and a second by Ms. Ramirez. If there isn't any discussion?
Yeah, for discussion in this period, yes. I wanted you to highlight, if you could, again, where we stand as far as Flagler schools and how you were able to obtain this, and where we stand as far as like the percentages of this happening. So if you could kind of touch on that.
I am going to let these two ladies talk about that process. They did all of the work.
I just want you to highlight that, what you told us in the workshop.
So we began with a pilot program where we had a middle school teacher at Buddy Taylor teaching Algebra I and Geometry. We had a high school teacher both at FPC and at Matanzas who piloted this in their Math for College Algebra, Math for College Liberal Arts courses. And because of that pilot program, we actually were able to place fifth in the nation in a contest that Khan Academy put on for the use of Khan Mego. It was called Khanathalon for AI Explorers. And that attention is what brought Khan Academy to us and essentially led us to this opportunity.
So now we have the opportunity to offer all of our sixth through 12th grade students access to Khan Mego, which is basically a 24/7 AI-powered tutor for personalized learning for them. So it's a fantastic opportunity for all of our students and help for their parents at home, too.
Great.
That is why people should come to Flagler schools. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much for cheering that.
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. So we will now move on to academic services, 16.01, Emory-Riddle Aeronautical University and Flagler Schools Dual Enrollment Articulation Agreement Amendment. Mr. Reeves?
Thank you, Chairman. For just a reminder, folks, today that we shared this at our workshop, bringing back before you our contract with an amendment with Emory-Riddle Aeronautical University. This is an adjustment towards a reduction of cost of about $440 in this segment of the contract. This is because that Emory-Riddle is not able to stand up a course this year at Matanzas High School, but they are standing up one for next year. And I'll reflect that in the years, next year's contract. Any questions?
Okay, so entertain a motion for 16.01.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Mr. Bars and a second by Ms. Chong. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we will call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. Okay, so operational services, 17.01. This is inter-local agreement with the school board of Volusia County on the provision of educational services for out-of-county students. And we have Ms. Davina this evening.
Good evening, Board, again, once again, and Superintendent Moore. I am bringing to the inter-local agreement with Volusia County on the provision of educational services for out-of-county students. As a reminder, we discussed this in the agenda workshop two weeks ago. And just a clarification, this is not going to do away with our school zones in Flagler or in Volusia County. It will just allow our students who are straddling county lines to attend schools with their friends and neighbors, even though it is across another county or attend another school in another county.
Okay.
I want to say thank you to Volusia County for working this out for us. It will definitely help some parents across county lines. And thank you for that clarification so that people understand.
Yes, thank you for that. So I need a motion for 17.01.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Chong.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ramirez. And any discussion?
Just to add a little bit of context, since there was some miscommunication, if you will, and related to this, and Ms. Moore, would you mind discussing that a little bit based off of the email that you had sent out in regards to this, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, and the number of students that are basically coming over from Volusia and vice versa?
So as discussed in the workshop, we have a number of students that attend Flagler schools that live in Volusia County, as does Volusia have that live here in Flagler County. What this does for our students is it gives our students some greater choice to allow for them to continue to go to school here in Flagler County, or as Ms. Davina stated, it will allow for them to go to Volusia County as if that were their zone. And so it gives them some additional choice and flexibility. What it does for us on the other side as well, for our students who are coming to us from Volusia County, it identifies a group of students who have traditionally attended Flagler County. They've had to come through controlled open enrollment and the choice process like everyone else. But these students have traditionally attended school in Flagler County. This gives them that also, that flexibility to come and be a part of Flagler County, or they can remain in Volusia County. They can come and be a part of Flagler County as if that is their zone. And we have agreed upon from Volusia and from Flagler what their track, their attendance track will be, what schools those students would attend.
And this has been an ongoing relationship between Volusia and Flagler. Is that...
Yes, we have been working on this agreement for over a year now. And really, it was initiated by us in Flagler County to help provide some choice to our students that are in the southernmost part of our county, right there on the Volusia line.
And the number of students that are going to be coming over from, vice versa, from both counties ends up being basically the same?
Yes, there's no exchange of funds between us or Volusia County. The number of students is basically a wash. And Ms. Davina, do you have those numbers before you? I want to say it was 40, about 40 students, but it is a wash, and we do have that information.
Yeah, that's what I want to... Thank you very much for that.
I'd also like to have a couple of clarifying items to discuss. Mr. Delaney, can you reiterate or kind of review for us what the school choice statutes are? And that, I think, from the community, there's a misunderstanding that school choice is maybe within our boundaries and not necessarily outside of the county boundaries.
Well, in situations like this, even before the school choice was expanded, there's always been the case where you have neighborhoods that are sort of divided by a county line. The two districts did exactly what happened here. They got together and the superintendents worked out a proposed agreement to handle things like attendance, disciplinary issues, transportation. So that has been going on between districts for a number of years. With the expansion of controlled open enrollment, there are the opportunities for students to attend from outside the county, but they are not moved to the front of the line. They are put in a similar position for schools that have capacity.
Thank you. And so we have some protections when we put this into place. Flagler school students will always be prioritized over Volusia school students. And in terms of the co-mingling of funds, it's only related to the base student allocation for each of these students. And again, at this point, if it's a wash, what about future developments in the southernmost reaches of our county? Can we, if we determined at some future point that we wanted to build a school in that area, we could discontinue this agreement, correct?
Yes, so like all programs, the FTE for those students will follow those students. So whatever FTE is generated for those students, it will follow them to Flagler or to Volusia, depending on where they are enrolled. In this provision, it does say that we will meet at least annually in order to identify if we will continue with this. And so at any point that this agreement is not beneficial for Flagler County, we are able to make an adjustment, as is Volusia as well.
And finally, with regard to student discipline, following the Student Code of Conduct, both Flagler and Volusia have the purview to, I don't know if there's a kind of word to say, reject, expel?
Rescind.
Rescind, thank you. Rescind the invitation for a particular student if they don't align with the Student Code of Conduct. And so we're ensuring that we're maintaining a safe school space for our in-county students. Correct?
Absolutely. It is outlined, what the provisions for revocation or for rescinding a student, that is outlined in the agreement, including seniors, making sure that, you know, we're not bouncing students that are in their senior year that would not be beneficial for that student. And so it is spelled out exactly how we would go about that process, including warnings that we would provide to the students and notification that would be provided to the district in the event that is a possibility that a student is revoked or their school choice is rescinded.
And finally, in listening to community members, it seems that the impetus for this demand is not so much that they're not choosing Flagler County schools. It is a distance issue. And where we are trying to, and we understand that sufficient sleep is important for students. When they're starting at middle school at 7:20, that is a significant drive. So do we have, what is the average drive from that, I guess, let's say Cody's Corners, that area to FPC? That would be the zone school. I think, is it around at least 30, 35 minutes?
Cody's Corner?
So this would be for the areas within Hunter's Ridge, which is off of Airport Road. Those students are on the bus one way over an hour.
Yes.
And we do have statute that says that we, the students should not be on the bus for more than 90 minutes.
Right.
And that definitely becomes difficult when you think about where that location is located, as well as for us to be able to add additional stops in order to get the students, other students as well. We did make some adjustments. This board gave permission for us to have van drivers, so we began to send vans there. But really, this is us looking out for our families that are in that area as well to say, let us help you have some options that are available to you. We want you to continue to choose us, but if it is better for your family, for you to be able to go to Volusia School, which is across the street from you, then let us help to facilitate that and provide that choice. And on the reverse side, do the same thing for some students who consistently, their family consistently chooses Flagler County on the north side of the Volusia line.
Thank you.
And I'll add, I'm very excited about this. So thank you for doing the research and the work, because I've met many districts that are in similar situations and they don't have this opportunity. So thanks.
And I would like to just echo that Ms. Davina has really worked hard to get this accomplished, and we appreciate her efforts towards this. So thank you so much.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Passes unanimously. All right, that closes out our business for this evening, and that moves us to our second public comment, which is open to items off the agenda. Anybody?
No, sir.
Nope, okay, so we have nobody signed up, so we'll close public comment. And we will move on to board member requests. Okay, hearing none, we will move on to upcoming board discussion topics. Is there anything to share?
No, those have been updated. As they come in, we will add the requests that came forward today. We'll have that available for you.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. So we'll move to closing comments, and we'll start down at the end of the dais.
Again, I want to begin by thanking you all for this opportunity to sit amongst you guys and represent FPC. As the end of the school year is coming, FPC is doing a lot of preparation for obviously the big ceremony graduation from like the senior meetings, decision pages, hall decorations. FPC is definitely in that graduation season. I also want to take this time to recognize some Bulldogs who are, as always, achieving great things. Our formality singer chorus had an amazing performance at their spring concert at FPC. And our FPC dance company had their last show where they honored their 14 seniors who are going to be departing soon. Our girls' track and field team placed second at the five-star conference meet with Maya Tyson, who won the shot put for the fourth year in a row, and won the discus by breaking her own school record. Leilani Rosa, who shadowed the school record in pole vaulting, jumping with 11 feet in the air. And Karina Marcellus, who was a three-event champion, winning the 100 hurdles, the long jump, and the triple jump. And a huge congratulations to our boys' track and field, who placed first at the five-star conference, which was their 17th five-star title, with the most in the five-star conference history. Colby Kronk won the shot put with Tanner Colley-Bennett with the pole vault, jumping with 14 feet. Aiden Peterson won the 800 meters, and RJ Watson set a PR with the triple jump with 44 feet and 4 inches. Our FPC esports club, Super Smash Ultimate Team, made it to the second round of the Florida State playoffs. And our Muafah Theta team placed 14th overall in their previous competition, with a perfect score in their inner-school tests, third place for the scrapbook, fourth for the computer competition team with Leon Gregorik and Anjali Tomerlin. Three top 20 topic test finalists with Leon Monchizuki, Anjali Tomerlin, and Said Hyder. Our HOSA team qualified for nationals for the first time in FPC history. Our Bulldogs are continuing to do great things. And once again, thank you for this honor to share all these awesome things with you guys and Flagler County as a whole. Good night.
So good evening to my fellow board members. And again, I would like to thank you all for allowing me the privilege to sit with you tonight and represent Matanzas High School. So this spring, I want to say that we proudly celebrated six of our student athletes on College Signing Day. They'll be continuing their academic and athletic journeys at institutions such as Point University, St. John's University, Bruton Parker Christian University, and the St. John's University, Bruton Parker Christian University, and the University of Florida. We're very proud of their hard work and we know that they're going to represent Matanzas with great pride. Our theater department impressed with their performance of Little Shop of Horrors, showcasing outstanding talent onstage and behind the scenes. Our hospitality and tourism students gained real-world experience attending the Tiger Bay Luncheon, which Ms. Ramirez was there at Hammock Dunes. On the athletic front, our softball team has been making history, winning the thirty-third annual Roger Jones Kissimmee Classic and setting the best season record in school history. This is all thanks to Coach Manhart's leadership. Our school spirit was on full display during prom week, leading up to a beautiful and unforgettable prom night made possible by the efforts of our amazing staff and volunteers. We also celebrated a major milestone with the opening of our new library and our building, a modern student-centered space that enhances our campus. And as part of our ongoing expansion project, classrooms are also being shifted to optimize use of this new space. We'll be holding a formal ribbon cutting on May thirteenth and it will be and it will begin at four P M. Looking ahead, final testing is in full swing with ALP, AP, ACE, state exams, and technical certifications. Again, as another honorable mention, our ALP pass rate is currently at seventy-five percent with sixty-six out of eighty-eight students passing, in which previously we would only have one to two students pass this exam. We're also preparing for a series of end-of-year events. We do have our Teen Summit this weekend, which is available to students from grades six through twelve, and it will be an amazing community service. I mean, I apologize, an amazing opportunity to get some community service hours. Our Senior Decision Day is on May first, in which we're going to celebrate our graduates' next big steps. Grad Bash, Senior Walk the Halls, and Senior Field Day are all events designated to create lasting memories and recognize our seniors' hard work towards the end of the year. Our PBAS Spring Carnival is on May twenty-third, and of course, the grand finale graduation, which will be taking place on May twenty-eighth, in which we're going to honor the class of 2025. I want to thank you to our dedicated teachers, staff, and community partner and community partners. Your support helps make all of this possible. Let's finish strong. Go Pirates.
All right, well done, ladies. And I love, I get to see them everywhere, I feel like everywhere, so it's it's been great. So I just want to start, Matanzas High School and FPC, they had their ECG, EKG events. And Matanzas, they ended up getting one hundred and thirty-nine students and then FPC one hundred and fifty. So in one day, so we were able to gather lots of volunteers. And while I was in college, I was a medical assistant, so I knew how to do ECG. So I was able to volunteer and help like get some of those students done. So I was able to meet students. It it was a really great experience. The both campuses worked extremely hard to get them in and out and then back to class. So thank you so much to Matanzas and FPC, both athletic directors and principals for making it all coordinate and work so well. The Military Ball was amazing for Matanzas. And I told all the students at Matanzas, hey, I'm going to see you at your Military Ball, so make sure you say hi to me. And they did, so it was really great. First Sergeant was amazing and Major Mallard and Ms. Moore did an incredible job with her speech, so well done. We are just so lucky to have the students we have, the activities we have, so very proud right now. And then while I was at FPC, we had too many volunteers, so I gathered so many that they're like, oh, we don't need you. So I was like, I'm hungry, let's go and have some lunch to myself, I said that. And so I I talked to the principals, they were all there, you know, watching the students, talking to the students. What's really nice, they literally are, they have a cart in at FPC and they're, you know, talking. They see everything that's going on, but they're managing it so well, but in a way where, you know, the students, I think they're enjoying it. And so I just sat down and I, three lunch periods in, students just sitting, not thinking, and they're looking at me like, oh, who's this lady? But it was great. I got to meet students, ask them questions, concerns, great things, bad things, cool things. I learned about lacrosse stuff going on this summer. The food was great, so Ms. Angie Bush, I called her after that. I mean, everything was just amazing, the staff, cafeteria staff. So kudos to FPC for that. And I had a meet and greet at Beltaire. And so I was like, hey, I need breakfast, let's eat there, checked it out, great food again. You know, these kids are, they have more options than you could imagine. So then I had lunch there as well, got to meet the custodial staff again. So things are just really great. And any issues you might have, Ms. Angie Bush is a great director, resource. I even talked to some students who were lactose intolerant, they didn't know what to do, so gave them her information. The Teen Summit that's happening, so that should be, yeah, right around the corner. So if you are sixth grade through high school, I highly attend that you register. And FFA, that was an amazing experience. This week, actually tomorrow, headed for Florida School Board Association. So again, we as a county are very privileged to be a part of this association. They help with our training, so I'm going in for another budget training. So hopefully bring back some good material. And yeah, thank you FTC for the wonderful shirt, been collecting them from all of them. So very proud of Flagler Schools and all the staff, so thank you all. Hope you have a wonderful week and a great weekend.
So this time of year is a time to reflect on accomplishments and recognize our students who are going on to the next portion of their journey in life. So there's a lot of excitement and wonderful events going on. And I couldn't be more proud to be affiliated with this organization and what they're doing for for students. Starting this Friday, I would love to hear from students, parents, faculty. I'm going to start some ruddy's rounds. Thank you to my daughter Lila for coming up with that alliteration. And I'll be at Buddy Taylor Middle School on Friday. I'll have some information posted with the school and on my social media page to just welcome you to come and chat with me, let me know your reflections on the year, what were the wins? What would you recommend the direction to get us to that premier organization status? Ms. Kronk is going to set me up in the principal's conference room. So again, I'll have more information out there through the school and Facebook. I also am looking forward to participating in some of the recognition with the students for their achievements for having those scholarship drive-bys on May eighth. But, you know, I want to impress with all of our students in our county. Sometimes we're looking for the easy thing, the quick thing in terms of that next step. And my daughters, who are just visiting over the weekend, you never know what's going to stick with them, right? My daughter was kind of bemoaning some of the work that's happening in in college and the finals. She says, you know, Mom, something that you tell me all the time is short-term pain for long-term gain. And that's exactly it. Because if we are, if you want to achieve something worth having and you don't want it to be something that anybody can take from you, you're going to have to undergo some additional work and put your nose to the grindstone on it, and it's going to pay off. And I'm seeing it with my oldest daughter who's graduating. I'm seeing it with some of my friends whose childrens are participating in welding school and mechanics. And it's really wonderful, but and there's so much to take advantage of to move to that next step in your life. It's really wonderful. However, all of this would not be possible with those funding dollars. If you look at our budget and all those numbers that are flying by tonight, you'd see that just from our local tax funds, we've gone through ninety percent of that at this point in the year. And many of these programs for career development, IB, ACE, these items are currently on a legislation to have cuts. And there was a memo put out by the chair of the School Budget Committee, Mr. Burgess. And he had countered in this memo that this funding is not a cut, that really that taking half of the money per student for each of these programs is really just allowing additional flexibility for schools to spend that money. If if that was the case, then then why even have this in the bill? It's going to make it more difficult, if not eliminate, the ability for our schools to get that additional funds when students do pass those exams. And they are rigorous, they do take extra money, they do require the educators to be skilled or certified in different areas. And those are the programs by which our school district's success is measured many times in terms of an A school or a B school. So I implore you to please reach out and make your voice known because this should impact every single student in this county. Because our goal is that every student in this county is doing some short-term pain for long-term gain and building either a pathway to a career, participating in IB, in ACE, and the other programs that would be directly impacted by this funding. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Sorry about that. Madam Superintendent, I'm probably going to steal some of your thunder, so just bear with me, okay? That's all right, just cross them off when you get there. So April twenty-third is Administrative Professionals Day. I saw those wonderful flowers that were in the office today for tomorrow. So I really want to just talk a little bit about the importance of the administrative folks that we have throughout the district and not only just in the district offices, but in our schools and the and the contributions that they make every single day. I mean, they are the masterminds behind a lot of things and they get things done, they move things, they're movers and shakers. And they are the backbone for a lot of things that that take place. We celebrate them not just today, but every day. But they always have that can-do attitude, and I just really appreciate how they can juggle all the things that come towards them. The other is, you know, you got to talk about Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So I'm going to talk about Bus Driver Appreciation Day because I think that's extremely important because it's kind of near and dear to my heart. My grandfather was a school bus driver for thirty-six years, and so was my dad's oldest brother the same amount of time. Mr. Ed was my grandfather's name, and he was more than just a bus driver. He was your friend and he was your neighbor, and he'd probably whip you. And if you messed up on that school bus, in fact, he wouldn't, he would. But I just really want to thank Mr. Walker and the team that they have for Flagler Schools and what they do every day. And they're more than just bus drivers, they're mentors, they're their kids' friends. And so we really honor them and what they do every single day. I know I won't touch on this too much because it's not really applicable totally about Flagler Schools, but the FSU event was something that we are as is at the forefront. But what I wanted to highlight was the law enforcement officers did a fantastic job of stopping the threat. Took less than five minutes. And some of the people who I've worked with over the years responded to that, and they did an outstanding job to be able to stop that and more casualties, to make sure more casualties do not happen. So with that being said, going back to one of the things that we have for water safety this week, weekend is going to be at Beltaire Swim and Racket Club. So that's this event there, so I encourage you to attend that. And then also I wanted to recognize Flagler Beach on their one hundred years of being of existence of a city. We had a great turnout last week for celebrating the one hundred years, so congratulations to them. And then one last thing related to legislative issues, we're in week seven of the legislative process. There's a lot of things that are going to be happening in the last week. A lot of things happen, all these different bills that are out here that we're following. They may pass, they may not pass, that's why we have to make sure that we stay on top of that. So our lobbyist group and our staff have been working diligently following these bills because so much is going to be changing as we start working through conferences with what that budget's going to look like for us. So and then my last thing that I will say is I'm looking forward to Thursday night for the Turn It Around Awards, where we'll celebrate students who have made meaningful and inspirational strides in their journey, where they've had some missteps along the way. But we're going to be able to celebrate the remarkable growth that they've had in their behavior. And I look forward to being able to speak to that group on Thursday and talk to them a little bit about a young man that I dealt with. I mentioned this at our workshop, over the years, that was a not a good kid, but he has turned out to be a fantastic young man, and people can change. And so I look forward to being able to share that message with them. So thank you, how you have backed my time.
I'll share a positive story. I was at a birthday party a couple of weeks ago and talking to a mom down in Hunter's Ridge and just telling her about our inter-local agreement, you know, she'll have choices, you can go to school closer there. And she said, oh, no, we've heard such great things about Flagler Schools. I've already enrolled my son in a, you know, that's, it's great to hear things like that, to get that kind of feedback. But, you know, it's just, we have more choices now, and that that was the goal. If you don't want to drive so far, you now have that option. And we have it in in writing to go with Volusia County. So thank you again to Volusia for working with us on that. Also met with, I was at Benel last week and had a chance to meet with teachers and staff and just want to thank them again for taking time to stop by and give feedback, both positive and negative. But yeah, you could see that this board just wants to be accessible. We want to, we want to hear from people, you know, just to do the best that we can to make our schools the best place to be. So thank you. Yeah, everybody have a good night. Thanks.
Yes, I'd also like to just say my thoughts and prayers are with those who were affected by the shooting at FSU. And thank you for highlighting that, Mr. Bars. And I appreciate all your comments tonight and echo many of your sentiments as well. And just want to thank our staff and also just again praise our Transportation Department. You know, that's such an important role in a school day, getting the kids home safely, to school safely and and home safely. And so it's, we really appreciate all their efforts. And I just wanted to just thank the board for some for all the efforts that that you're all putting. Right now, we are going through a lot of heavy lifts with going through our our policies and updating them. And and there's a lot of extra work and outside off the dais here and in extra meetings. And right now, we're in bargaining. So this board is putting in the effort to to make sure the school is moving forward efficiently. And so I just want to tell you that it's it's an honor to to continue to serve with all of you and thank you for your efforts. So I'll yield my time, Superintendent Moore.
It is an exciting time of year. Two very important things are happening right now in this time of year. We are in the Show What You Know, AKA assessments. Some great opportunities for our students just to demonstrate what they have learned this year, as well as course selection time. And so I really say to parents, if your child is going into middle school or they're going into high school, making sure that you are following the pages for that school and paying attention to the information that is coming to you through email from the the school that your child is zoned to or you've been accepted in on on choice. Because course selection is so important for our families to be engaged in with their with their students. I want to also just say thank you for recognizing transportation and our administrative assistance. And we are excited to celebrate our employees and our teachers the first week of May. At the next board meeting, we're going to be able to share and celebrate two groups. We are going to be able to celebrate all of our individuals who are retiring. We will celebrate them at our next board meeting. But we will also celebrate our student board members as that will be their last meeting before they are thrust out into the world. And so we are excited for that opportunity to celebrate them. They have done a phenomenal job representing their school body. And so we are excited to celebrate them at the next, the next meeting. I want to just remind our families of students who are in high school that are a part of our sports teams as well as band, ROTC, that we will have the free physical night on May twenty-first and May twenty-second. At that event, you can sign up to have your physical as well as your EKG done on that night. And I want to just thank our partners with Advent Health because we could not do it without them. So thank you Advent for making that possible for our students. Please pay attention to our our website. We have lots of events hap- Please pay attention to our website. We have lots of events happening. All of the end-of-year events for our schools, they are now published, so you will be able to know when your child's promotion ceremony is, as well as, of course, graduation. One of the things that I really enjoy about Flagler Schools, and I've seen this at so many different levels, as a teacher on up to superintendent, is our students have a lot of voice. And so, our students will email us, and they will work with their administrators in order to voice their opinion about their school environment. And I will tell you, after the incident at FSU, I had several students to email even me and offer suggestions. And so, for those students, I get them connected to Mr. David Bossertet and to the principals of the levels that they are. We're not too busy to go and sit and have a conversation with our students. And so, I just want to continue to say to our students, you have voice. Email me, email your principals, email this board as well. We want to hear from you and make sure that your school environment represents the things that you want to see. And so, please continue to do that. We're down under thirty days in school yet, but it is still school. So, I just want to remind our students and our families to stay the course. All of the expectations from day one are still in place. We have a final push for grades and all the things, making sure that we remember there's lots of celebrations, but we still have learning that is happening. And so, we want to be mindful of that. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend the ceremony for our dear Ms. Randy Fassett from Buddy Taylor Middle School, a dedicated school counselor, who has given so many years to this organization and so many students. And her family just, they extend their appreciation for the love and support that they've received. And so, I ask that you continue to keep that family in your thoughts and in your prayers, and I hope that you guys have a good rest of your night.
Thank you. And also, just another reminder that for our next meeting on May thirteenth, it won't be here. We're going to be doing, having our workshop at the ribbon cutting for the Metansus Media Center. So, we're very excited about that, and you can look at our calendar for more details. All right? This meeting is now adjourned.